Select Board Meeting, June 24th at 7:00 PM. We need to accept the call to order, accept the agenda, approve the minutes of June 10th. Warrants, excess weight permits, correspondence, Emerald Ash Borr damage, David Dent, Summer 2021 Bond Pool Designated and Authorized Representative, Parks and Recreation Update Town Picnic, Review Purchasing Policy, Citizens Petition to Change the Name of Cubs Road, Select a Date for the Question and Answers with Elected Officials, Town Clerk Work Agreement, Discussion DRB and Planning Commission, Public Comment and Adjournment. I'd like to move up 14 to 4A. Tiffany is here, and I'd like to move David up to 4B because he is also here. With those changes, can I entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve the agenda with those two amendments.
Second. Jamie?
Aye.
Excuse me?
Fox here now.
Okay, thank you. Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Approval of Minutes of June 10th.
So move.
I just have one thing. Um, the Zoom room is $499. It's $4.99 in the minutes. We just need to change that to $499. Okay?
So move and change.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you. Um, warrants. Payroll ending 6/25 in the amount of $10,618.52. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve payroll ending 6/25.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ronnie? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you. Payroll ending 6/18. I guess I should have did it the other way. For $11,412.94.
Move and approve payroll 6/18.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Accounts payable 6/16 to 6/30, Can I entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve accounts payable 6/18 through 6/30. That's the date.
Yep. Can I have a second? Any discussion?
Um, the only thing I'd like to point out is that um, normally the chair has gone over different high price items, and these warrants are available now in the Select Board Packet on the website and social media, so that is no longer gonna happen. We're just gonna approve them the total. We don't have to spend time.
Yep. So can I have, um...
No more discussion.
No more discussion. Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move up discussion of the DRB and Planning Commission. Tiffany, will you please join us?
That was my agenda item.
Okay, well, you can talk too.
I'm good. You know that.
I know that.
So I wrote down what I wanted to say, because I think it's important. I didn't want to miss anything.
Okay.
Um, so, so I've asked Megan to reach out to Jim Sullivan at the BRCRC to help with the amendments that you guys asked for. However, I want to ask you if you would consider something tonight. I'm asking you to consider approving the bylaws as they were presented to you at the hearing and allow us to work on the amendments separately. I think it's a lot, it's a lot of unfair pressure on the Planning Commission to have all the new bylaws sitting there unapproved because of two small amendments. These amendments are good, and we will definitely work on them. However, I would rather the Planning Commission give these amendments the time and thought that they deserve, instead of being pressured to work on these quickly so we can get the bylaws passed. I understand why you decided to go this way, but I'm asking you to reconsider. It would help me do my job as Chair better and would help us do better work for panel.
I thought we said that we accepted the bylaws except for with the changes. Am I misremembering?
I... Go ahead, Bob, sorry.
Go ahead, Bob.
We certainly talked about that, and I think, uh, I think that at least one of us made the recommendation that we pass them as is and, uh, and then get the, uh, and then get the amendments. It seems to me that that's the right way, the right approach. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what we ended up. We'll have to go back and read the minutes. Um, but it doesn't seem to me that they are actually passed yet. I don't think we actually passed them. But I am certainly in favor of passing them and then working on the amendments.
Okay. I thought we had passed them.
I, I for one, um, and, and I, I respectfully come from Tiffany, 110%, okay? And I, and I really and truly do. I for one will not vote on something, no matter what it is, whether it's these bylaws or anything else, that I don't agree with as they're written, because too many times, and I'm not saying this will happen, because I, I don't think it's going to, but too many times I've seen things passed, and then it never gets fixed the way that we were asking or the way boards were asking, not our board, but other boards or other government agencies have asked for. So my, my vote is still gonna stay a no. Just for that simple reason, and, and I really, I don't think it, if we were operating without any bylaws whatsoever, then I would have a big problem, and I would probably go along. But we're not operating without bylaws, contrary to popular belief all over the place. Um, and, and comment. The, the new bylaws have, any changes, in my opinion, in the new bylaws, for the most part, are pretty minor, and there's not a major difference between the bylaws that we're working off and the new ones. Um, so I, I don't think you're under a lot of pressure to get them done in a big hurry, other than, um, some people in town trying to put pressure, I need to do it. I, I really and truly believe that. I, I believe it as a Select Board member. I believe it as a zoning administrator. Um, the bylaws that we're working with now aren't, um, they're not bad. They're not horrible. They're missing a couple of things that we need to work on. Um, and you guys are working on them. Um, and I, and I get that. That, that's just my two cents with it. I just, I don't, if we were working without bylaws whatsoever, or if we were in a major position right now, um, that was compromising the town, then, then I'd be inclined to vote yes. But the way I see it, I, I will vote no because I don't agree with them. And I, that's just me being in my morals.
What's the timeline, do you think, Tiffany?
The amendment, with the amendments that we're looking at? So our next meeting is next week. Uh, Jim Sullivan's going to come, and if we can get people to show up to the meeting, we can get it done. But if people don't show up to the meeting, then we, we're stalled out.
So that's, that's why I put the discussion about the DRB and Planning Commission. I'm the one that asked for that to be an agenda item. Um, and I saw some frustration in the last Planning Commission meeting. Um, DRB struggles with it as well, and they have. Um, the Planning Commission at their last meeting, some of them sat here, and they couldn't do anything because they didn't have a quorum. And I totally get that things happen in everyday life where people can't make a meeting. But I also think there's provisions where if somebody doesn't make so many meetings, then they can be removed from the Planning Commission or, or the DRB. And I don't, don't quote me, I think it's three meetings without an excuse, is that?
Meetings without an excuse.
Right.
Without letting the Chair know.
So I think it's an extra, these positions are extremely important.
We, um...
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but shouldn't we close out the first conversation before we move on to this one? These are two different topics, right? The, the passing of the bylaws versus, uh, attendance.
I don't think we can vote on the bylaws tonight because we didn't have it as a warned agenda item.
That's true.
Um, uh, that could be true. I think we need to, you probably need a ruling on that.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't trying to jump off. I just didn't think we could vote on them because we didn't have them as a warned agenda item, and we didn't add them at the beginning of the meeting.
That's true. Unfortunately.
Well, but we had the hearings, right? So we've already had the hearings. We've got, we've got the bylaws on the, uh, on the agenda. I believe we can vote. And, and, and I, I take your point, Mike, and you, you, you made, uh, and I, I do see that you made some, uh, some valuable points. We do have bylaws in place. They aren't substantially different than the current ones, but I think we all agree that the current ones, as is, even without our changes, are an improvement over the old ones. And I think that's a true statement. So, um, with that, I mean, I, to be honest, I don't feel super strongly one way or the other, but, but I am leaning toward, I think we ought to pass them. And I, I would trust the PC that the Planning Commission will come back with the changes. And remember, we had two levels of changes. We had a minor changes, and we also asked them for the long, for us to approve quickly. And then we also asked for the longer term for them to explore the industrial areas. And that was, that was a separate ask, and, and we're not expecting to approve that right away. So, uh, so, um, uh, my, uh, my recommendation is that we go ahead and improve, approve the bylaws as they are, and continue to, uh, to, to, uh, to ask the PC to come in to make the modifications that we want, and then vote on the modifications. And I think when Jim was here, I believe that was his recommendation too, that you can pass them, get them in place, and then make the, and then make the changes. So I'm gonna, uh, with that, I'm gonna motion that we pass the bylaws as is and continue and ask, have the Planning Commission continue with the changes.
We, we can't, we cannot make a motion. Uh, we cannot vote on the bylaws because they are not on this agenda
That's true.
for, for tonight's meeting. And we didn't add them to the agenda for tonight's meeting. Just because it was a past meeting, we did not, and I, I would refuse to vote on that flat out, period. I would not vote on that. I would not vote on that motion, 100%.
Ronnie, what's your opinion?
Well, it looks to me like it's a quandary. You know, we don't have any information.
Right.
Planning board ladies here. Of course, I got, I wasn't notified. I felt there's some info. Tell me, does it mean, or if it's every, every, every Tuesday and every Thursday or whatever, every other, just say what it is. But I don't look at the follow-up website. I probably should, but I don't. And therefore, so that's why I missed one of them meetings. Still, in all, uh, I don't think we can vote on the changes. Where, uh, one was on the amount of cars and registration and things like that. We didn't do anything yet. The planning's gotta do something to that before we do anything. That's, that's my opinion. Which I think we could have if we had a meeting.
All right, I, um, like I said, I, 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 I'm not strong one way or the other, but I, I, I thought we could get them in place, and I thought that what we had, what was presented to us is better than what we currently have. But if we can't vote on tonight, then that's, that, and that's the, uh, then that's the bottom line. Then, uh, then let's just continue to push forward to get the amendments.
All I'm talking about is them couple of disagreements we had. Other than that, I thought the town plan was pretty much in, in hand.
Right. Did you have anything to add? Okay. Fred Miller has his hand up. Can you unmute Fred, please?
Take that, Fred.
Brad, can you hear us?
Just, can he, yeah, can you hear me now? Yeah. Um, I don't know if this is time to, to ask for this, but, um, we could possibly start, start doing some of the edits, um, soon after our next meeting. Uh, if, if we were given a, uh, a copy of the current, um, proposed bylaws in Word form, that's an editable form. Because right now, all we have is in PDF form. Um, and it leaves a lot, a lot more work for us to type everything in. Whereas if it's a Word form, we could just edit it into the text and, and mark where we, where we changed.
Are you asking for the Word document for the current bylaws or the proposed changes?
Oh, for the current by, for the, for the, for the proposed new bylaws.
The new bylaws, okay.
Right, yeah.
And I wonder if, uh, I wonder if Jim is the right one to ask for that.
Right, it may be Jim Sullivan, because he, uh, I think he prepared the document.
Okay, thanks, Fred.
Okay, thanks.
So, Tiffany, I think we should let you go back, work on it. And then, um, if you don't think you can move forward, then ask to have it put on the agenda, and then we can revisit.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
Yes, it does.
All right, is everybody with an agreement on that?
Yeah, we can add it to the agenda for the next regular board meeting.
Right.
And then, and then we could vote on it legally, and however it goes, it goes. But I don't think legally we could vote on that tonight.
No, I don't think we can either. What's your, when's our next meeting? Do you know the date off the top of your head?
July 8th, I think.
Is that before your next meeting?
Our next meeting is next week.
So, see what happens next week? And then if you want to get put on the agenda on the 8th, go ahead and call in Tim, and we'll have you put on, and then that way we can vote around it. Thank you so much.
Megan, Megan...
Oh, yeah, Megan.
Megan may have the information.
Yeah, because I asked her to reach out to Jim.
Right, she may have the information you guys are looking for at your next meeting. This might even be a moot point because those two minor changes.
Right.
Or three, I think, because one was from 3 to 5 or whatever years, I don't know.
If everybody shows up.
So that, so are we done, are we done talking about the bylaws now?
Yes.
Do you want me to say? Hi, I have my hands up. May I make a comment?
Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Bernie Dewar. Um, I appreciate you guys working on this. Um, I think the Planning Commission on the whole has done a really good job. Mike, I never, ever in anything I have said have I suggested that there are no bylaws. So since I'm one of the only people who's talking about it, I really need to set that record straight. I have never suggested that. I just think these new bylaws that they have worked on for the past three years are substantially better. And, um, I'm glad that Bob and I are in agreement. Um, so, um, Tiffany, et cetera, you've done a great job, and I hope you get a quorum with your next meeting, and you can do these small little changes. Um, and if not, then I hope the board will pass them as is, and then just do the amendments for the small little changes. Thanks.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Megan.
So one, one thing, Tiffany, before you do me, all right?
It's never done.
No, no, because I just thought about this for a minute. Seriously, seriously. Because, because I've made my stand, okay?
I know you have.
And, and I'm really not gonna buckle from that. What I will tell you is that if you go to your meeting next week and you come back to the board, because, because if we make the changes, we have to go through the public hearing process. Okay, again, all over. But if you make the changes that we had talked about, barring the industrial zone, because that one we know is gonna take a long time.
Right. Right.
But if you come back to this board on the 8th of July and tell us that we've made, we've agreed to these changes, these are the changes that they are, okay, even though it wouldn't be changed, I would agree to pass the bylaws at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay? I, I just, I really have a personal problem voting for something. I, I, you know, I know that we say we have to separate town government from national government. Holy shit, the national government, they passed up. They don't know what they're talking, they don't even have a clue what they're doing. And I'm not gonna do that. I just, I'm not gonna do it on speculation. But if you come back to me and this board on the 8th and say, "This is the change for tiny houses, this is the change for the camps, this is the change for," I don't remember what the other ones were, Tiffany. And it might even be just those two.
It was just those two.
Then I'm, then I'm, now, and I will, and I will vote to pass them on the 8th of July.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, you have a good night, Tiffany. Thank you for all your hard work.
Which, thanks, Steph. Which brings me to the discussion about the DRB and Planning Commission. Um, there's a couple of things that I have a problem with. One, I have a problem with, um, the no-shows all of the time, and I, and I think the chair persons of those two boards need to have our backing from the Select Board that says if somebody doesn't make so many meetings, then they can remove them so that they can get people in there that are gonna make meetings, so that they can actually do their job.
Right, I agree with that, 100%.
So I, I, I don't know if we need to make a motion or if we, however, we just need to give the two chairpersons of those two boards our blessing on that. Um...
In the past, they've sent us emails or come to the board, let us know such and such and such and such. Hasn't been the six months worth of meetings, and then we just...
We, um, could, could we get a, a listing of, uh, you know, uh, the, the, the meeting dates? I know that we, there was a lot fewer meetings over the last year, particularly on the Planning Commission, I think, uh, and since the lockdown. What I would like to see is a list of the, of the meetings, and maybe that's already there, and, uh, for both DRB and for Planning Commission, and, and then who wasn't present. I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to go off speculation. I want to actually see it. And whether or not they were planned absences. I mean, people take vacations and other things.
Right, and I get that, Bob, and I, and I also think that, I also think that the Select Board, which I almost forgot this, which is kind of a, well, was one of the points I wanted to make. I think the Select Board, I think we should have Megan, because she is the Secretary for both Commissions. I think we should ask her, as the Select Board, to send out letters, an email, however we want to do it, to each and every board member on the Planning Commission and the DRB, reiterating how important those positions are and those, and those two boards or commissions, or whatever you want to call them. And, and the attendance is kind of crucial. And, and look at, you got two nine-person boards. You're never gonna have nine people. You'd really seldom if you did. But trying to get five would be nice.
It'd be nice to have a quorum every single time. And if somebody's gonna be off or whatever, they can contact somebody else to make sure that there's gonna be a quorum.
Well, there's a couple, there's alternates.
There's alternates, absolutely.
On, on the boards.
All right. Mr. Spender wants to talk.
I only wanted to say that the rules and regulations of both the Planning Commission and the DRB state that if a member misses X meetings, the Chair can ask them to leave.
Correct. And that's three, right, sir?
I thought that was what you said, and I, and I, I didn't, you know, I wanted, I just wanted the Select Board to reiterate to the two chairmen, chairpersons of the boards that we're backing them. I, I really think that's important, that we do that. Um, and I have, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, sorry. Is that something we can have Rebecca write? Just a, uh, right, you, you were, you were looking for a, a kind of a rules or, uh...
I don't even know if we need to have a rule thing right now. I just think maybe if we send a
A friendly reminder.
friendly reminder to each board member, and we can have Megan do that, that, you know, hey, look at, you know, these are the meeting dates, because I think the DRB did change their meetings from the first and the third to the second and the fourth, um, whatever, Wednesdays.
I think so.
I, I think they changed. I think they changed. I'm not positive, but I think they changed to the second and the fourth Wednesdays of, of the month. So maybe that's
Yes, they did.
Thank you, Megan.
So I think that's something maybe Megan really needs to do, is send that out and, and to each and everyone, even the ones that show up. Send them out there, just to say, hey, this is what it is. And maybe we send out an electronic version, and maybe we send out a mailed version, so that people get, or, or a phone call, or whatever. I don't know. I just think it's important.
All right, so I make a motion that we have Megan send out letters to both the DRB and the Planning Commission, per letter and email, as soon as she can.
Second up.
Any other discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie? Bob?
Aye.
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 Angie, aye. Thank you.
Boy, I have one other thing on this. Sorry, Ange.
No, you're fine.
This stuff is, you didn't care.
Ronnie, you're fine. Don't worry about it.
I also have a feeling about, um, on either board, when you have a Select Board member that sits on that board as a board member, it becomes an ex officio member. So it doesn't count towards your quorum. They can't vote. It, it takes up a spot where you potentially could have somebody who could make a quorum. And I don't know, I don't know the background in it. I don't really know how it came about, or why, or when, or whatever, and it doesn't matter. I think we should do away with that and open up a spot for a voting member on whatever board it is. I just, I think it needs to be done.
Is that something that we have to do right now, or can we wait until the next cycle goes around where you're appointing members?
I don't know. It's just, this is just something that's come to light since the Planning Commission had a, a little bit of a problem getting a quorum last time. The, the DRBs had, had a problem getting a, getting a quorum at times, and I just think it's something that needs to be taken care of. I, if a Select Board member wants to go to a Planning Commission meeting or a DRB meeting, I'm sure you're more than welcome to go there and have comments and do whatever you have. I mean, I go as the zoning administrator. I was at the DRB last night as a zoning administrator. And I had plenty of chances to make comments. Um, I don't think that a, that a non-voting member of that, of either of those boards is beneficial to us whatsoever.
I, I, I'm gonna disagree. I think, um, uh, we, we, these ex officio positions have existed for literally decades, and, um, and it really hasn't been much of an issue with it. and, um, um, and it really hasn't been much of an issue with it. Usually when you have an ex officio member, it's, uh, it's, uh, it, it, uh, it, or at least in my recollection, it's because we didn't have enough members, and somebody showed interest, or somebody was already on that board, hadn't expired yet, and won an election. Um, uh, we, we do have control over it, and we're, we're going to have control over it. Uh, uh, and I'm not, and I'm not telling you I am dead set for it or dead set against it. I, I think we need to ponder this a little bit more. I don't think, I don't want to re-change the rules every time an incident happens, because what is the, you know, what's the counterargument, and what's going to happen on the other side? So I, I don't think it's appropriate to react to the fact that we couldn't get a quorum last time, uh, uh, by changing the, the makeup of the, of the board or commission. I, I think that's a, a, a little bit of an overreaction.
Jamie?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought there was seven members and two alternates. I think up to nine.
Of the DRB?
And I think that, I think the ex officio member was originally appointed by the Select Board, and it's a state mandated slot.
Right, just to sit in on it.
Yeah.
So if it's state mandated, it's something that we
Well, yeah.
I think, I think your executive administrator could do some research.
Well, and then
Talk to Jim Sullivan, say, what's the genesis?
Right, exactly.
And I think it's a great idea, Steph. And I, I, I wasn't looking for a vote on it tonight, Bob, I, I have a problem with it, because there's ample opportunity for that person, whoever it is, to go to every Planning Commission or every DRB meeting, and sit there and do what they want to do, and not be a member that's taking up, because, because if we have a nine-person board, it doesn't matter, if we have an, an odd-numbered board, then, then you have a non-voting member on that odd board, and everyone is in attendance, they could be in a deadlock and be done, and not, and not get anywhere with anything, ever.
I understand, yeah, and I, I, I think we, I, I think we all understand that the, the odd number is, 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 is done for voting, so that it's not a deadlock. Um, uh, but again, I, I would just caution against the, uh, against the, the knee-jerk reaction to an incident that happened recently. Uh, I, I think we, I, I, I would caution against making these, these drastic changes just because we had an issue and we think we're handling it.
Oh, knee-jerk reaction, Bob.
The other thing I'd, I'd also caution against is saying things like, uh, like people are just sitting there on the board. I, that, that, people have stepped up to serve their community, and we ought to appreciate it.
I didn't say anybody's sitting on the board doing nothing. The people that show up and go, and they, they show interest, and when they go, I think they do a great job. I didn't say anybody was si- just sitting on the board.
I thought you had just said that.
No. No, if I did, I didn't, it was just meaning sitting, not just taking up a position, but, you know, sitting on a board, like you said, on the board of whatever. Like, we sit on the board of health. If I, if that, that was, if I did say that, that was the context.
But, and I apologize if I missed, if I missed.
If I, I don't think I did, but if I did, that was the context, a hundred percent.
That's the way it came off, I'm glad I gave you the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, because it's not what I, for sure, a hundred percent.
Let, um, can you like research this a little bit, Tim, for us, or have Megan do it for us, please? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to David Dent. I'm sorry
I'm gonna get up.
I'm gonna have to ask you to leave for a second.
Didn't have anything else to say.
Thank you for your input on that.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, he's fine, sitting, saying something.
Oh, you lost your glasses. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
So tonight, I, I come to the board wearing my, my tree warden, if you will, hat. Um, I just, this is something that's, uh, an issue that's been going on for a little while, and, uh, I called Mike and decided we should probably talk about it. So, uh, a few years ago, probably I would even go back as far as three or four years ago, um, we, or I came to the Select Board, uh, when the Emerald Ash Borer, which is a, an exotic boring insect that, that's now in our area, um, but three or four years ago, when it was on its way here, we, we got together and we just made a note that at some point, um, there should be a little bit of money put aside each year to, uh, remediate these dead ash trees. So now we kind of fast forward, or, you know, on present day, four years later, and we're starting to see that, um, and starting to see it very quickly. So the Emerald Ash Borer is in our area, it's in Bennington County, it's in Pownell, Williamstown, it's all around us at this point. Um, and I personally have seen it quite a bit. So now what I'm starting to see is driving up and down the roads, um, there's a fair amount of dead ash already, and, um, certain areas are worse than others. Um, it's inevitable. Um, all of the trees, both species will, um, that we have around here, both species will, uh, die at some point. Um, it happens really quick, it spreads really quick, and the trees become dangerous very quick, and dangerous to, to take down and handle at the same time, so. Um, basically, I have a whole bunch of other information about it, but I don't think it's necessary. I think that what, what I'm here for tonight is to just uh, make everybody aware that at some point, um, we're going to want to start thinking about putting some money away in the budget to handle the, the removal of these trees. Uh, and it's going to happen quick, and we're probably behind the eight ball already. A lot of towns have had, you know, people come in and they've created plans, and they've, you know, budgeted starting a while ago, and we really haven't done that. Um, and I think, I don't think we're in a horrible position, but I think we're going to see trees on the road sides, um, going really quick. So, um, I, I just don't want to see the town get in a spot where, you know, rather than, you know, removing a dozen trees one year, where in, in two years, we've got a hundred trees a day. It's going to be a lot more expensive.
Are there any treatment against the ash wood?
There is, um, and I'm doing a fair amount of it on my own, but it's not really practical for the town. If, it would be, the, the treatments are more set up for somebody who has the tree in their yard, and maybe it's their only tree, or they want to save the tree. But for, as far as, um, being practical and, and, um, inoculating trees on the road sides, it would be too costly.
Dave, what, what do you feel is, um, you know, when you, you generated this conversation with me, what do you feel is, at this point, is an adequate number to put into the budget to start this fund, if you will, for lack of a better term right now?
So, just to back up a second, when I had this conversation a couple of years ago, I thought that we had already started to do that. Did, did you happen to, did anybody notice if there was?
I, I forgot all about asking Tim to look for it, to be honest with you. Um, and that's something that, that's having you in here tonight is going to start that ball rolling, it's going to go to Tim when we get done with this conversation, and it's going to, whether, whether we have something in place already, or, or we're going to, um, try to add it to the budget, budget season, it's going to be, Tim's going to make a note, which I'm sure he already has, um, to, to add that. So we can certainly look for that fund. Um, but let's assume that there isn't anything, because that would be my
Traditionally, the, the monies that, that, uh, the highway department use, or, excuse me, the money that, that the town uses to do tree work comes directly out of the highway budget. So it's always kind of been one of those things where Yeah, and it wasn't, you know, and, and we've done some work with Joel, we've taken some trees down, not necessarily ash trees, but, um, before we jump into the number part of it, I think that it's, it's, one more point that's worth making is, is that, um, if, if we don't come up with some sort of a plan, or at least make some valiant effort towards it, I ju- I would just want to see the town in a position where it's like negligent against it, you know, so that, and that's, and that's kind of one of these big takeoffs that I've seen in the other towns. It doesn't mean that we have to get every single tree done every year that's dead, but as long as we're making some sort of an effort towards it. Um, you know, there, there was years, a few years back, there was a limb that had come down out here, like, through somebody's car, you know, and it was right out here in the parking lot, so. But we had been working on those trees, and, you know, because we could prove that we were, you know, we had a little bit of a plan, you know, the town wasn't on that fault. So, going back to the, the money part of it, I think a probably a reasonable number would be about two thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
It's not a lot of money.
Well, gives us a base if we don't even have a base.
So, and, and on average, um, it's hard to, to calculate these things, but like, say, a good tree that was not dead, on average, would probably cost, you know, somewhere, you know, for, for town pricing, about three hundred dollars. But as the tree becomes dead and more brittle and harder to handle, you're going to see that probably go up to like, you know, three, four hundred, just because it's going to be more difficult.
Right.
And, and obviously, some trees are going to be, you know, for instance, if there was one in a cemetery, you know, that's going to be a lot more difficult than if it's just on the other side of the guardrail. So, um, I think the two thousand dollars would give us a way to go, and, and, and just so that everybody understands, like, when we talk about tree work with the town, and it's, it's quite a bit different than it is, you know, if we were to work for somebody in their yard. Um, and traditionally, what we do is, uh, you know, I myself work for a lot of different municipalities, um, all the way around us, and what we do is we do an hourly rate, where we, everything is planned ahead of time, and we just go through as many trees as possible. So you might be able to do, you know, ten or fifteen, or maybe even twenty trees in a day, or that, you know, for that daily rate or whatever, doing it as quickly as you can. Um, and there's, I, I have kind of a plan for that, whether I was to do it or oversee it for somebody, because it obviously puts me in a little bit of a predicament with, you know, I don't want to, not, not here trying to advocate for myself to take the trees down. So in either case, whether I was doing it with our company, or I was overseeing it, um, there's a way to do it, I believe, that can be pretty, um, efficient, and get the most out of that money.
Sure.
Do you just like drop them and cut them in big chunks, or?
So, if, usually alongside the road, I mean, if there was no guardrail or anything like that, yeah, I mean, we would just try to do it as quickly as possible, get the tree down. Um, but a lot of the ones that I've been seeing, and, and these, you know, I haven't had a chance, you know, part, part of this process should, there should be an inventory done. I mean, it doesn't have to be really exact, but it is quickly, just driving through some of the roads. I only know the ones that I see, because I drive by them all the time, I haven't really gone, you know, and checked out all the different roads, but the idea would be to just, you know, if, if it was a bucket truck thing, it's still the same thing, you get them down as quick as you can. With, especially with the understanding that as they become more dead, they become more brittle, and they're, like, for example, there, there are some towns around us that are actually taking the trees down before they're even
Dead.
Before, yeah, before they're even infected. Because the, 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 the point is, is that they're all going to die no matter what, and they're safer and cheaper to do while they're not dead. Um, but I don't know if I necessarily would want to do that, but, um, anyway, and then working with the town, like, getting the trees down, leaving the wood roadside, so that maybe the town crew can come back on another day when we're not paying by the hour to have somebody there to clean the wood up. I think it can be done pretty efficiently, if there was.
And to that, uh, to that point, I mean, ash, you know, the ashes, uh, the ash trees are particularly large, so they can easily take out buildings, and, I mean, they're just looking at them side by side with a mature maple, they just tower over them.
Yeah, but, uh, I mean, in certain cases, a lot, a lot of the ones that I've seen are smaller trees. We also have a lot of dead elm trees around too, which is from the Dutch elm disease, which has been around for a long time, but, um, we probably should take an approach where we just, a little bit every year, we just pick out the worst ones and, and deal with it.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
And Joel sent me a text that the road department does put money, to your point Jamie, they do put money in their budget every year for tree removal, but, um.
Does he know how much is in there now?
It's, um, it's not, um, it's not specifically for the ash trees. It's a Joel's discretion, the road department. So which was going to bring me to my point, is maybe at some point, David, you and Joel could get together, rainy day when you're going to get all soaked
Yeah.
wet, and, and just ride around together and do that inventory. And, and we could come up with a plan,
Yep.
you know, to that, to that effect, because I, I think, you know, Joel should definitely be involved in
Yeah, no, he's been, we, we just did a job with him down on, on the cereal.
Right.
He definitely works away at it. This is just kind of a separate thing.
Right.
It's, it's been on the back of my mind, and I, you know, I feel like we had this conversation a few years ago, but I, I don't know if it ever went anywhere.
We, we definitely did, and, uh, and there are some of those up at our, at our house, so if you wanted to get some practice.
I think he knows what he's doing.
Well, I think, I think we do need to look at, uh, uh, in all seriousness, so I think we do need to look at, uh, uh, are there any, are there any state programs? Did we already ask about that? Uh, uh, I mean, because it's, uh, I mean, it's a lot like Dutch elm, right? It's, it's just taking over the ashes.
There, there are, um, treatment programs, is that what you're asking, Bob?
Well, both treatment and maybe, uh, uh, some, I, I don't know if there's grants, or some, uh, some, uh, you know, best practice for how to, how to move forward for towns, because it's impacting every town in Vermont, I'm sure.
There is a lot. Like I said, we're kind of behind the eight ball, which is probably my fault. Um, I've actually helped other towns do some stuff too, and I just, you get busy, you know, think about it. There are, many of the towns have a, a pretty detailed plan about how they're going to go about handling it. It all starts with the, with an original, you know, survey, or, uh, you know, an inventory of what we have. I'm just kind of here tonight just saying, we have a lot, geographically speaking, we have a high concentration of ash in our area, and a lot of them on the roads, and we're going to have to deal with it, I guess.
Well, I think, when you approached me about it, I thought it was extremely important to get it on, and, and to get a budget number set up for it, so that we aren't all of a sudden scrambling to try to pay for this later on down the road. And maybe we even start now with, you know, which is totally on Joel, not, you know, maybe we start with some now that are, that are in, you know, in that dangerous shape and, and work at that, you know, I, I don't know. I, that's, that's totally you and him together, and that, and I'm not, would never try to, try to get involved in that, that's totally out of what I want to get involved in, so.
Okay.
Man, I just don't think two thousand dollars a year is very much, that's only like six trees, right?
Well, so
I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm thinking
Well, yeah, but that was just, that was a ballpark number starting point. We can, we can say we want thirty thousand.
So, so just, just to give you an example, you know, because it is different than doing residential work, so, like, when we work for the town, um, or any towns, like, our hour rate was one person on a bucket truck is a hundred and fifteen a night. So if you did an eight-hour day, you know, you're, you're still somewhere around a thousand dollars, so you're getting in two days a year. And I think you could do, you know, depending on, you know, how difficult in particular trees might be, uh, you're, you're still going to cover ten, fifteen, maybe twenty trees. It should be, it should be done really quick. Like, you, when we, when we work for these other towns, or even with Joel, like, um, in this case, I see pulling the bucket truck up, going up, getting the tree down as quickly as possible, packing it up, going to the next tree, having a plan all laid out ahead of you, so that you can get your, you know, so you are covering a fair amount of ground in two days out of the year, you know, certainly, it could be done more. I, I don't know, you know, how many, you know, and the town could, the, the highway department's capable of doing some of the easier stuff too, so.
Okay.
Everybody's busy, and I know that, you know, this town here is very busy.
I just, I thought it was an extremely important thing, I, I really appreciate you coming forward with that to me, and saying, let's do that, so.
Yes, I agree. I just don't think two thousand seems like a lot.
Well.
Seems like you need a little more than that.
I'm trying to be responsible, I mean, that, some of the other plans that people call for, again, this number is also, also only talking about removing trees, so. Uh, one thing that I'm not familiar with it at all, because I haven't really thought about it, is what there are in the cemeteries specifically, so if you're taking trees down like that, they are going to be a little bit more expensive, and they're going to, you know, um, but also replant them, like, that's another item.
Right.
I mean, it's not something, it, it's also costly, and, you know, but at the same time, it is probably, or should be at some point, consideration of our plan.
Well, and I, and I have totally agree with you on that, on the cemetery thing, I think that may be where we even want to
Start with?
Start with
They don't fall onto the
That's right, so
Plots.
Cemeteries are kind of my pet peeve anywhere, and I, I don't, I don't want to see any damage to the cemetery, they're, they're part of our history, and that's a big thing for me, so, maybe that's where we even start looking, you know.
Mm-hmm, I agree. If you could meet with Joel and come up with a plan, that'd be great. Tim, can you make a note to add that to the budget?
Yep.
Please?
I'm thinking there is a plan item.
Yeah, but we would just want to make sure that we have enough money or whatever, and make sure it's there.
Yeah, and if there's not one, I think we should create.
Create one, yeah. Maybe we should create one just because there's one already there for the highway, the trees that we have ones specifically for the ash trees.
This isn't something that's going to go away any time. You'll probably deal with this next ten years.
Okay. Appreciate you coming and bringing us to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Excess weight permit.
Who was it?
There's one there.
Do I have it? Oh. So this is everybody?
Just the bottom.
Oh, just the bottom, United Natural Foods.
I think mostly approved the excess weight permit.
Second it.
Eighty thousand?
Joel's already signed off on it, so.
All right, any further discussion? Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie? Bob?
Hi.
Hi.
Angie, hi. Correspondence? We just have the one from Sid, which we will, that's already on there, your petition, so we're not going to talk to you just yet, sir. The other one is from the Winchesters. To whom it may concern, please be aware that Pownell Valley Fair Committee will be holding its annual celebration at the rear of the Pownell Fire Protection Association fire station on Saturday, July first, from two to eight P.M. The appropriate one-day event liability insurance has been put in place. Due to the COVID precautions for this year's annual celebration, the committee will be holding a battle of the bands rather than a fair. We are excited to bring this hometown, hometown celebration to Pownell residents. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call. Now Winchester. Now, I believe, were they on there? Did they want to add anything? I thought I saw Nell and Jim on there. Could you unmute them, please, and ask if they have anything to add? Now, Jim?
They're still muted. I just tried to unmute it.
Maybe they're just watching. If you want to ask or say anything, just raise your hand. There they go. Hi, Jim, do you want to?
No. No, we don't.
Okay, no, we don't. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah. Good luck.
I don't think we have to motion.
No, we're just, no, it's just a correspondence. All right. Summer two thousand twenty-one, three bond pool designate and authorize representative.
Right, so, coming up in the next week, we'll get our commitment letter from
Just a second, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, and coming up in the next week, we'll get our commitment letter from the Vermont Bond Bank, for the bond issue for the new town hall, and there's a quick turnaround, and with the Fourth of July holiday, um, they just kind of gave us the heads up to designate an authorized representative, to be someone on the board, to sign that commitment letter when we receive it.
The motion that a Chair signs a commitment letter when we receive it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Hi.
Angie, hi. Okay, thank you, Tim. All right, Parks and Rec update, Town picnic, is that you, Meg?
Yes, and, um, Parks and Rec got a hold of me, they said they were not going to be able to make it today, to give their update.
Okay, we can add it to next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, all right, reviewing purchase policy. Tim? You went over it, correct?
Uh, model purchase, sorry, the model purchase policy from B L C T. The slight changes that I, um, saw right off the bat was for the purchasing agents. To basically take names off and just leave titles.
Okay.
Um, need to go through it and take out the town administrator role and put select board and or their designated authorized rep. For incidental purchases, um, that's currently set at a thousand dollars, to raise that to fifteen hundred. The minor and the major purchases are fine, left as is. For the sealed bid process, um, to add. That we use electronic media as well for posting bids for the website and for, uh, Facebook. And, oh, for the very end, there was recurring purchases to raise that from five hundred to a thousand.
Last page?
Yep, on page six.
From five hundred to what, a thousand?
To a thousand, and we came across, Mike did just now, uh, number nine on page four. Which I should go back and do some more investigative work to see how closely we're using that and how much it applies to us. And it relates to, um, getting, um, bonded, having the bidders bond themselves for. Construction projects over a certain amount.
Yeah, I don't know if we use it or not, and, um, it's in our purchasing policy, and if we so choose not to use it. Then I should remove it, or if we're using it, then it's a moot point, but, um. I just, I just think that we, we should have Tim do a little research on that before we, you know. And I mean, I don't think we were planning on doing anything with this tonight, other than reviewing it, like, like we planned on, you know, one policy at a meeting or whatever. And then, and then adjusting and moving forward, but that's the, other than the things that Tim brought up, I, I didn't see anything. I, there's a potential, I think, to increase the price of a project if, if you make them carry a bond and, and stuff. Now, I don't know, um, when, when someone, like, like if it's a, um. Excuse me, like if it's a road project through a grant. Um, I don't know if, uh, if a, an approved contractor. Um, for the state may already have to be bonded and have to prove that as, as well through the state, well. I don't know, Jamie, I'm, I'm not gonna assume anything, I wanna know, yes it is, no it's not, black and white, I, I don't wanna say, oh, generally they do. Nope, I wanna know yes or no. But, as far as I know, anything that we have. And it, I could have overlooked it, but any of the bids that I've seen, I didn't see that included. That, that, that portion of it, and it very well could be that I overlooked it and just didn't see it, and shame on me if that's the case. But I just want that to be researched, though.
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't need to motion anything, Tim, can you work on those changes and then bring it back to us?
Yep.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Bob, do you have anything on that?
Oh, sorry, Bob, did you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Ronnie, anything? All right. So then moving on to citizens' position of change the name of the Tubbs Road. You may step back up here, sir. You're welcome. Can you just bring that down so they can hear you, please? Just state your name, even though we all know who you are.
Good evening, members of the select board, my name is Sid Smithers, my wife, Monday, and I live on Tubbs Road. Which leaves three forty-six near the post office and Tubbs Brook. And I'm here tonight to request that the, or to follow up on a petition. A number of citizens who live on Tubbs Road filed, requesting that the Board of Selectmen change the name of Tubbs Road spelled with two Bs. Back to its historic spelling with one B. Uh, it may seem to be inconsequential, and in a lot of ways it is, it certainly isn't life threatening. Uh, but the historic name of the road was spelled with one B. That's because it's named after a geologic feature in the brook, which is a worn out tub. Uh, like a wash tub, and that's where the name came from. The town inventory of town roads, town highways identifies Town Highway twelve. As Tubbs, T U B S, Road. And the name was changed literally, principally, I believe, because of, of modern, uh. Intellectual property and. Computers, because the mapping services, MapQuest, spelled it with two Bs. So it, it kind of became two Bs, and then Google spelled it with two Bs. We'd like it to spell the historic way, which is with one B. And if, uh, the road boss can't find the old signs at the town garage, uh, we would be prepared to pay for new ones. So it wouldn't cost the town, except the road crew time to put it up.
Okay.
That's autocorrect for you. Sid, with the, with two Bs versus one, I'm sure.
We're gonna tell it to this because of a stutter.
I just want you to know that I reached out to Priscilla Maxim because of nine one one, and she said, asked her to check into it for me to make sure that we. Cause I know that the nine one one and the state and the town will have to merge, or not merge, but coincide each other. So she said, as long as it's historical, it can come to the, um, board and we can take care of it. The only thing is, um, she'd have to send out letters to everybody on the road and to the state and to nine one one to make sure that they're all.
Joel, Joel just sent me, not to be interrupt, but Joel just sent me a message that E nine one one changed it to two Bs versus one.
Okay. Cause she wasn't sure, she said that she didn't know if the state had changed it, or if, when nine one one started, if they had changed it. She didn't see any historical, anything in her notes or anything, and she also said that we could check with the listers. I, I have no problem with changing it back to T U V.
He has both signs.
He has both signs? We just have to make sure that the state knows and nine one one knows. And I will contact Priscilla if the board chooses.
Priscilla, contact E nine one one?
Yes, yes. Cause she actually emailed the, the E, the E nine one one gentleman for me to find out if we could legally do it, and if it was okay and all that stuff. And she said yes.
My perspective, speaking on, on historical things in town and the town history, then it should be back to one B and. And whatever E nine one one, who, who are they to change one of our roads that's history in our town, sorry. I'll move that we. Change the spelling of Tubbs Road to one B versus two. Um. And we have both signs, so there's, it's just a matter of putting the signs up.
Okay, can I have a second? Any further discussion? Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie? Bob?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Angie, hi.
Thank you for your time and attention, I appreciate.
And I will, um, call Priscilla tomorrow and let her know so she can contact the nine one one. And then the state, and we should be good, and, um, I'm sure Joel will be changing the signs.
Thank, thank you, thank you for your input on the D R B and Planning Commission too, said by the way.
Thank you so much, enjoy your evening. That's true.
You do when you get there.
Thank you. All right, select a date for the question and answers with elected officials. Okay. It doesn't matter to me.
Our next meeting is eighth. Planning Commission, Megan, when does the Planning Commission meet again? Do you know the date?
Yep, it's the twenty ninth, June twenty ninth.
Let's, um, can we do the, can we do, well, we said, we talked about vacations, I was gonna say do July seven.
Is there probably a lot of people on vacation, Tim? You haven't heard anything from anybody?
Let's, let's do, let's set it as July seven, that's a Wednesday.
Okay, what time, six thirty?
It's, yep, the meeting prior to our board meeting on the eighth.
Okay. Yep. Um, last year we did the listers together, so I'm fine with that, um. But we don't have to do you or Megan, cause we already know, so it would be the listers, it'd be Ellen. And Julie, yep, and Darcy. Yes, she missed us last time.
Do we wanna choose the order right now? No, that's perfect, absolutely fine, I, I could, I thought that's what it was, but I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Perfectly fine with that.
It was June.
July seven.
July seven.
Yep.
At six thirty. Okay. All right. Moving on to town clerk work agreement, did everybody get theirs and read it? So.
So that is the B L C T format for bringing an elected official into personnel policy.
Bring that down to Tim, sorry.
Do it in a way to have vacation or whatever policies you want to apply. The key to that thing is whatever you don't want to apply to an elected official, you put in that little exemption area. And, um. Julie and I sat down, we went over that, I showed her the, the boilerplate one from B L C T, we walked through it, we had questions, we sent to B L C T, came back. And we came up with that, and the only difference is, um, she was most concerned with her health insurance, of course, which that indicates she would receive. Um, and we took out the typical things for elected officials, which was. Uh, termination and, and reviews and things of that nature, and, and the one thing we added was hours of operation. Um, so that she can still do her own hours, and we came up with that. Yeah.
Right.
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 Um, and what that does is it, it ties her into the vacation policy we have now. And we said we'd start with her, um, date of election as town clerk, which would give her about ten days of vacation. And she would follow the, the policy we have now.
I read it, I didn't have a problem with any of it.
No, but I'm glad you explained it out, Tim, because now it's.
Everybody.
It's black and white.
Yes.
It's black and white, everything in there is black and white, there's no. Um, there's absolutely zero room for anybody to.
For miscommunication or anything.
Exactly, it's a word on my mouth, and it's miscommunicating this or misconstruing this or whatever, here it is. This is the work agreement between the town clerk and, and the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, sorry. Um. There it is, black and white, I'm good with it.
Do we need a motion to accept it?
Um, you, yes, and you just have to sign it.
Okay, so I make a motion that we accept this between Julie and the town, I have no problem with it, I think it's great, thank you, Tim, for your hard work.
And thank you, Julie, for your input on, um, and, and being willing to, um.
Work with us.
Work, work with that and, and be part of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's very important.
It's not on there, she's not having to add, right?
No.
Okay. So can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Hi.
Angie, hi, so this is the original, you want me to sign this one?
Yes, please.
You don't have one, honey?
I got a pencil, I can sit here. I didn't, I haven't ever. I'm blamed for that, too, and then you know what.
All right, moving on.
There, I stand out now.
All right, so we already did the D R B, so we're moving on to public comment, if there's any public comment, please raise your hand. Remember to announce your name and three minutes, please.
There it is. Got it.
Megan, is there anybody out there that wants to raise their hand?
I think Jenny got lost on the internet.
No one's raising their hand.
And can I?
I'll make them, I'll move to adjourn.
Any further discussion? Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Hi.
Angie, hi, thank you, everybody, I'll have a good night.